Good afternoon and welcome to our Board of Commissioners work session meeting. This meeting is typically held at 1:30 PM, but we had a particularly extended VOC meeting today and we are now beginning at 4:30 PM. We are asking for a lot of grace, a lot of grace from all of our staff that takes time to be present and put forward their presentations today. We are asking for a lot of grace from our public to be able to spend the day with us to learn more about county government. And I know I'm asking for a lot of grace from our commissioners and appreciate your robust participation, but I am know that I am sure that I'm asking for the most grace from juvenile court as they have been wanting to provide their budget presentation from our last work session, but was delayed due to an extended meeting. And so I want to queue them up very quickly without much further ado, so we can hear from them and consider what they would like for us to consider in the upcoming budget.
Good afternoon and thank you very much for that welcome, Chairwoman Cupid. We thank you for the time and attention given today and the opportunity to present to you. My name is Adolphus Graves and I'm the Court Administrator here at Cobb Juvenile Court. And then we have our presiding judge, Judge Wayne Grant is here as well.
Good afternoon, Commissioner Cupid.
Good afternoon. Good to see you both.
Thank you, Commissioner Cupid, Chairwoman, as well as all of the other members of the VOC and Commissioner, it was a great opportunity to learn quite a bit about zoning and codes the last two occasions while we were waiting. So as citizens of Cobb County, we did learn a great deal. So we thank you for your commitment and attention to the detail there. So we'll go ahead and get right into our slide if that's okay. We'll share our screen. So of course, I wanted to start with the mission of our juvenile court. As you all are well aware, our mission is to ensure that the children and families within the community are provided protection in civil and delinquency matters brought before the court. We just wanted to highlight there that a lot of times when people think of juvenile court and the matters that come before us, they typically focus on the delinquency aspect of our work. However, it is extremely important always to identify that a good portion of our workload and the cases that the judges hear in the juvenile court are dependency related matters. And although we work very collaboratively and closely with the Department of Family and Children's Services, it does require quite a bit of our resources internally, especially with our clerk's office, in order to have those hearings moved as expeditiously through our process and through our system as possible, but also adhering to all of the state and local guidelines and time parameters around the scheduling of hearings that involve protecting, again, some of the most vulnerable children in our population, being those that are subjected to potential abuse, neglect, or other child welfare matters, including custody matters and things of that nature. So we just wanted to highlight and point out that that is a good portion of our work that's covered here as well. So later it goes on to state that our children and families are provided guidance and services that will be conducive to rehabilitating, strengthening, and restoring them to become productive members of society. And the court strives to meet this mission by utilizing resources within the community that promote accountability, provide positive alternatives, and reunify families within the best interest of the child. And although that's a lengthy mission statement, it really does encompass, again, the hopefully the full scope of what it is that we do in order to meet the needs of children in both the delinquency and the dependency matters that are brought before the court. So one of the things that we wanted to look at is also highlighting some of the challenges that we've been faced with as well as opportunities for improvement. For just around three years, the court has been engaged on the delinquency side and intake side as far as case processing with a grant funded technical assistance support from an organization that really helps us to look at the scope of how we touch cases that are presented to us for juvenile related matters from law enforcement jurisdictions and how we actually identify the needs of those children at the earliest point possible. So we've been heavily engaged in working with those consultants and some other technical assistants to make sure that we're maximizing the impact of our services that we have, which we believe also helps to keep our budget requests today relatively low in that we're really trying to make sure that we're doing the most possible with the offices that we have on hand. Our structure has been amended slightly within the last two years and we're continuing to amend that as necessary to assure that we're aligning our court with best practice safety standards and to assure that we're maximizing safety outcome potential for the community as a whole beyond the time that children that are involved in delinquent behaviors are just here with us in the court, but really trying to work to engage them with community partners and positive and pro-social activities that keep them away from not just the juvenile court, but also further criminal charges into their adulthood as well. So we really want to focus on that and making sure that our organizational structure is aligned in a manner that allows us to really do that throughout the court. So what we've identified is that we need to make sure that our budget allocations are in line with those enhancements, again, to maximize the safety outcomes as a whole, as well as our capacity to really maximize our community-wide collaboration with all of our partners. As you know, some of the primary partners that we work with on a daily basis, all of the law enforcement jurisdictions within the county, as well as the District Attorney's Office, the Circuit Defender's Office, the Department of Family and Children's Services, and the school districts, of course, as well, being that the majority of our children are engaged in school functioning. So we want to hopefully improve and sustain that. We just wanted to show this comparative analysis as well because we wanted to highlight, of course, that based on the cases that are filed, you know, there is room for hopefully us to continue to try to increase our capacity to be able to address the cases that are filed. Of course, we're waiting for the 2021 numbers to be published so that we can submit that to the administrative officer of the courts and then take a look and see what that looked like during the pandemic. But we firmly believe that we were one of the courts that here in Cobb County Juvenile Court, we really were able to maximize, with your support, maximize the use of technology early on in a manner that allowed us to continue having court hearings even at the early stages of the pandemic. And we believe that will be reflected in our numbers as well, and that prevented us from having a serious backlog and again, being able to address all those emergency manners in the time sensitive manner that's required. And for the budget side of this slide, if you notice, the budget request that we will make will still have us under the 2021 general fund budget of the Cobb County, which is the closest to us in the dollar amount allocated for juvenile court funds. So even the amount that we're requesting will still be less than the Cobb County's FY21 general fund budget. Then, of course, you have the breakdown, the fiscal breakdown of our numbers. We're proposing what we believe is a conservative request for an 11.5% increase in funding, and we'll discuss that in just a little bit, and also share the difference between '23 and '24 as a portion of the funds there are operating funds that there will be a decrease in 2024 because it will be a one-time purchase to upgrade our internal recording systems in the courtrooms. So we'll share that detail in just a moment. And then our personnel detail, again, we'll share in just a moment. We're asking for a total of eight positions, and again, that will be 11.4% increase there in the increase in positions that we're asking to be added to our general funds. So the breakdown of those positions, the first one judicial staff attorney, we are one of the few juvenile courts and courts really of any jurisdiction that do not have a staff attorney assigned to our court. Most typically have one assigned to each judge and/or at least one that is shared. As you all know, we have four juvenile court judges that are four full-time juvenile court judges, and we do not have a judicial staff attorney, which does sometimes limit our judicial capacity to actually conduct the necessary legal research for some of the hearings that have been conducted because they have to do it themselves and/or we typically will try to work with interns to do that. But again, that is quite a bit of a challenge that sometimes can delay hearings and/or reduce the capacity for us to have space on calendars because judges have to conduct and conduct that research themselves and commit to that. So we're just asking for a moderate increase there with one position of a judicial staff attorney to be shared with all four. Next, we have a judicial program coordinator. This position speaks to that community-wide collaboration that we believe that we really need to do a better job and to increase that communication. Typically, what happens without an individual being assigned to this function is that we miss opportunities to engage with some of our partners who have information or background information or history of working with some of these children, and we don't have the opportunity to engage on the front end. So we miss opportunities to either share information and/or to get a comprehensive understanding of what that child may have been dealing with prior to their coming to the juvenile court. So for example, just a very quick anecdote, if, for example, a child is experiencing some behavioral issues in school that require the schools to conduct evaluations or clinical assessments, or they've been working with a counselor or psychologist or therapist, sometimes there's the delay in us getting that information. And in the worst case scenario, that child can be subjected to further evaluation and testing once they reach the court because we may not be aware of it and/or the parents or the guardians may not be as forthcoming because there may be issues such as DFAS, history, and things of that nature. And so we sometimes, if we don't have that information, we can potentially subject the child to reevaluation that can be very harmful and sometimes even revisiting traumatic exposure that they've had to live through and discussing that and sharing that. And so being able to really maximize how we're working with all our community partners is, we believe, significant enough for us to ask for a judicial program coordinator to again, work with all of those stakeholder agencies that we presented, which there are several. Juvenile program coordinator, we're asking for two positions there, and one of those is to specifically assist us in support of our gang deterrence program that we have. We've been running the gang deterrence program here in the juvenile court called Rising for children who have been identified to be on the cusp of gang participation. As some of you may know, we have a gang suppression unit in our probation division, but what we wanted to do was to try to identify resources and more of an intensive program structure to be able to address some of those children that have been identified after being submitted to the court's consideration. Again, it has to be a court-involved child, but that they may be subjected to potential further gang involvement. So we run a specialty court now, again, that works very closely with all those partners that we've identified in more of a concise manner in one courtroom, specifically Judge Grantis's courtroom. And so a coordinator to help that right now would alleviate some of the strain that it's placing on the existing probation supervisors in the division who are trying to, you know, play more of a dual role, but in a team manner to play the coordination role as well in that specialty court is what we refer to it because it is not identified yet as an accountability court, which we hope to see hopefully in the years to come. And then the coordination of the program management, this is relative to the evidence-based service fidelity. So one of the things that we identified in our technical assistance grant was that some of the programs and services that we were using did meet the national standard of being evidence-based to reduce the likelihood of further delinquent behavior. But what we also found is that there were a lot of gaps there as well, and we've attempted to kind of work closely with the CSB to identify ways to reduce those gaps, but we still found that there are certain treatment modalities that are not covered by children's insurance and/or Medicaid. And so we're sending a lot of kids to CSB, but then there's maybe some gaps because the areas that they need to be working on aren't covered by that child's insurance. So we want to make sure that we work a little bit closer with our community-based providers to be able to introduce them to train and then hopefully monitor their use of evidence-based services. Judicial admin tech three, one position within our clerk's office. This is a position that again, is a courtroom clerk function. As you know, we have four judges and we do have four of those positions in place now. However, it does put a strain, again, when any of those are out and/or to help with our traffic court, which we've moved to a virtual format, and we're using, again, a hybrid of different positions to be able to handle that function. But we've found that handling that traffic court virtually has been a much more effective process. We've had more folks to actually show up than historically, had less continuances, and we're being able to process a lot of those traffic cases in a lot more timely manner. So we're looking for a full-time position as an admin tech three to help sustain that as well as to fill in in a floating manner for the courtrooms when the other tech threes are out. Judicial admin tech four, as of now, we only have one judicial admin tech four that's sharing their responsibilities among all four of the judges with the support of a tech three helping out. However, we do believe that we need to add another tech four to be able to split their duties between the two judges because it is a lot for them to try to work through calendaring for different courtrooms. So we want to add one more tech four to again, help with that efficiency in preparing court documents for the two judges that that position will be assigned to. Probation officers senior, we're asking for two probation officers, and this is where I say, Commissioners, that we're looking at doing things differently. I think historically in most juvenile court jurisdictions, when you, you know, do a budget presentation, you're typically asking for five, six, seven probation officers, and that's where the bulk of your request comes from. Well, we're doing that a little differently because we're really trying to repurpose and realign a lot of our probation officers. We didn't need to go heavy in asking for probation officers. And as you'll see in our presentation, we're really looking at even placing those probation officers instead of having to have them in the field supervision. We believe that they will be better used and again, helping us to be a lot more efficient if we place them on that front end and identifying those risks and needs using some of the evidence-based practices that we've adopted here at the court in the last 24 months to do more screening and identify actually what the child's risk is, not just what they were actually referred to for the court, but doing more of a comprehensive risk and needs assessment at that front end instead of just looking at the charges to hopefully better suit the response. We added a picture of our current org chart and then highlighted where the proposed position numbers would fit in the flow chart. This is just to provide a visual for where they fit within our structure. And again, we've restructured this org chart as of last year, I think was our second reiteration of this version, but it also has a bit of a flow from left to right as far as what we're trying to do. The clerk's office, of course, handling the processing of all the documents. And then as you slide to the right, that second column, our court support manager is where you'll find our behavior health conditions. That is the front end, also where you have intake. And so it kind of moves from left to right in more seriousness, and as the cases will flow, we hopefully cut them off after that front point. But of course, there are some that are going to need more support. And then you slide over to our program administrator and Mrs. Redmond in helping again, not just with the delinquency matters, but also in supervising our CASA program and helping to support the court and being able to learn more information about some of those dependency cases than you traditionally would just from the attorneys by having eyes and ears in the community. And then on the far right, you have our probation supervision that includes our gang suppression and Rising program as well for those children who are required to be placed on probation and don't respond to the earlier services that we have. And so that's just an overview again of our operating budget and the justification for operating request. This is where the $27,000, I'll just move quickly because I know you all have had a long day and I know we have other presenters, but very quickly for the accountable items, that is the audio equipment that we're attempting to upgrade. We've had on in the last six months at least two occasions where some of the equipment has gone out. We're actually down one recording system right now. Our existing contractor, our vendor is an agency that's out of state, and so we don't get as much of the local support in our existing contract. We submitted a proposal request through IS and they assisted us in identifying another vendor who provides similar services in other courtrooms in the county already and another court jurisdiction. So we're hoping to just to add on existing contracts within their work in the other courts, and this is what we identified as the purchase amount for the accountable equipment to equip all five courtrooms with new audio recording systems, which of course are more important and significant in those dependency matters. And when we're looking at issues such as termination of parental rights and custody and removals and so forth, that audio equipment is priceless when we have to request those transcripts. Then the IS technology that is requested to cover the cost of Zoom accounts, we attempted as long as we could to utilize WebEx functionality at the beginning of the pandemic, and it was something that we just had to move over to Zoom. Even though Zoom is less than ideal, the functionality just works a little bit better for court hearings. So we still utilize WebEx when we can and have limited the number of accounts for Zoom that we are asking for, that we pay for. So we just asked for an increase of 3,300 to cover the Zoom paid accounts for the employees that actually assist in running those courtrooms. And we have one Zoom account for each courtroom as well where citizens can log on. So all those have to be paid in order to facilitate Zoom court hearings. In-house training, again, a very moderate request that we're asking to add to our in-house training. With all of the advancements in evidence-based service and treatment modalities that we've put in place with our existing budget, what we run into is that there is a need for consistent in-house training for juvenile court staff. We try to work as closely as possible with Mrs. Moody and appreciate her flexibility in offering us up-to-date training in different areas, but there are on occasion sometimes where we need to have in-house training on field-specific juvenile justice best practices and appropriations for our staff that are specific to juvenile justice alone. So we need to have an increase in our in-house training budget. Similarly, with the registration fees and travel, again, increased, slight increases in both of those areas also to expand our capacity with our newest judge, who's not new at this point, but our newest judge as well, being added to the rotation of judges that have to travel as well for the conference statewide council of juvenile court judges conference, as well as some of the national council of family and juvenile court requirements. We have a moderate request there for their travel and training. And then the annual maintenance and support contract, we separated that out because that is the 4250 that will be an ongoing request in the 24 budget. So that is actually a part of the accountable item of 6258, and the $27,250 is connected with the annual maintenance and support contract, which is maybe less than $100 difference in what we're paying now, but we believe we'll get a much better annual contract and support from the local agency based on what they've proposed thus far. So that is connected to the accountable items request. And then lastly, we wanted to provide a slide that upon speaking with the county manager and speaking with our other judges, that there is something that we wanted to put on you all's radar that is currently being considered in the legislative session is House Bill 272, which is a request to consider raising the age of juvenile court jurisdiction in delinquency matters to 17 years old. As some of you may know now, if, for example, two children are in high school, one is 16, one is 17, if they are engaged in a fight and the 17-year-old and 16-year-old are both charged, the 17-year-old will be charged as an adult and the 16-year-old will be charged as a juvenile. In the overwhelming majority states in the country, that age of majority is actually 18. We are one of three states who are currently still at the age of majority being 17, and our state legislators are looking at that this year. The challenge is going to be, although it is something that we believe, we believe in our agreement with the notion and the theory behind including, is that it may end up being an unfounded mandate that we may have to take on the burden of not only assessing what the cost will be locally, but also asking you all for consideration and helping us to be able to do that. So that's something, again, we don't know what it's going to look like or if it's going to pass, but we wanted to let you know that is something that could possibly be on the horizon based on the fact that it has gone before the legislature the last couple of years, and this year has gained a little more traction, of course, as they develop more committees to expand their study and analysis of the potential impact. But most of that has been to the state and what the impact will be to the State Department of Juvenile Justice for housing and maintaining children that are incarcerated and what that increase will look like there. And it does not include local jurisdictions that would also be impacted. So we just wanted to place that on you all's radar and make you aware of that as well. And that is the end of our presentation.
Thank you so much for your presentation. Again, considering the move from our last meeting to today, thank you for walking us through the various staff needs and also additional operational needs of your agency and also for giving us a heads up with House Bill 272 and the potential implications that can have at the very least funding support from the Board of Commissioners. With that, I'm going to turn things over to our Commissioners to see if they have any questions or comments regarding today's presentation. Unfortunately, I do not see all of them readily, so I'm going to call on them by order. Commissioner Gamble, do you have any questions?
No questions.
No comments. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Richardson?
Questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Burrell?
Yes. Good afternoon, Judges. Thank you for presenting today, Judge Grantis. I know, Adolphus, you said good afternoon. The fees or the annual fee, whatever, for Zoom, do you just use Zoom during COVID or are you using that year-round, pre-COVID or?
We never, we didn't use, I will tell you that we're still, we're still in the pandemic right now, so we're still using Zoom. We use Zoom throughout, we've used Zoom throughout the pandemic, and we will likely continue to use Zoom because basically there are individuals that are still showing up positive and, you know, they appear virtually. There are kids who and families who are positive and they appear virtually. So we'll continue to use Zoom, I think, into the future, yes.
Okay. My reason for asking is if that could be covered under ARPA money?
Yeah, we're looking at that, Commissioner. We're looking at that for sure.
Okay. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrell. Commissioner Richardson? Excuse me, I'm sorry, Commissioner Sheffield?
No, that's okay. My question was on the heels of the Zoom, and perhaps this is a question for the county manager. I just wanted to know if the county has a master agreement with WebEx and if that would be extended to our judicial partners or no?
Yeah, we would have to talk with IS to see what that would entail, Commissioner Sheffield, in terms of either extending or how it might even impact the confidentiality of the court.
Okay.
You know, I'm not sure if Kimberly is on the call, but I'm not sure what our licenses agreement is at this point, but and/or how it may impact the court itself.
Okay.
I can speak to that. We do have a master enterprise agreement with WebEx, with Cisco WebEx. We do not have one with Zoom because we invested a lot in the WebEx infrastructure and the Cisco infrastructure. So we would have to look at what an enterprise agreement with Zoom would be like, but we wouldn't be switching away from WebEx either. So there would be two.
No, and that wasn't my question. I was just wondering if the court would somehow be able to utilize WebEx, not necessarily for the county to add an additional vendor?
And I think Adolphus could speak to that, but they do use it some. They just felt like in the courtroom and for, I think, for the people attending, for the public attending, Zoom was a little bit easier to navigate, but I'll let Adolphus speak to that piece of it.
Well, I can speak to it as far as the courtroom is concerned. What I can tell you is that Zoom has been, you know, a lot more user-friendly than WebEx was, and that's why we moved over to Zoom because we just had the, it was, the screens were freezing a lot during court. The, you know, the people were being kicked off of the sites a lot. So we had a lot of problems with WebEx. That's why we decided to explore Zoom.
Okay, thank you.
And we still do use it, so we appreciate that support because we wanted to keep the number of licenses that we requested from Zoom as low as possible. So we still use WebEx for staff meetings and things of that nature. So yes, ma'am, it's primarily for the actual courtrooms that we use it. Yes, ma'am.
Got it. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Judge and Adolphus, for your presentation. Thank you, Judge, and Adolphus, for your presentations. You know, we've gone through similar exercises of seeing the comparison of Cobb to other jurisdictions and saw disparity in how close the number of juveniles that you serve and how disparate some of the budgeting is. I don't, you know, have the benefit of having the slide deck in front of me, but something that did catch my attention and I did have a follow-up question with respect to was with the staff attorney, how many staff attorneys do you have now?
Zero.
That's what I thought I heard. And you have how many judges?
Four.
And so you're asking for one staff attorney to serve for all four judges?
Yes.
Okay, and I guess that's better than none at this point. I can imagine that's why that, you know, that contributes to some of that disparity that you're seeing and how other judges may be staffed. And, you know, I appreciate the judges and being able to do, you know, their research, but this is not typical and it, I'm sure, impacts some of their ability to be able to interact with their, their employees and with families as well as their ability to function in other capacities.
It, I can answer, answer that, Commissioner Cupid, it absolutely does. Thank you for recognizing that.
Okay, we ask people to ask for what they need. You said one, so. I know, I know that you've been.
I'm sorry, it's Dr. McMorris. I was just going to say that, that's why I wanted to be very transparent in that for every ask, there's another situation where someone else is in the same situation. And I was hoping that, you know, and it's, it was tough today for just, I get that.
It was very, it was very.
Right, it doesn't have anybody for all of these young kids that they are seeing. So I just wanted to say that's been.
Thank you, Judge. Thank you, Jackie. I'm elevating you to Judge status. Dr. McMorris, you need a staff attorney.
Thank you very much.
Sharing that with us, you know, a lot of us are doing so much with so little and it just lets you know how much the people that do work are committed to service. And thank you for your service. Thank you for all that you're doing and helping our families and our young people. And I know once we had Sharon at a town hall meeting a couple of years ago and the families and myself, we were just blown away with how much is done within juvenile court. So I want to thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Going on today, if you can help us in sharing your presentation with commissioners electronically, that will help us to be able to continue to weigh what was shared here today as we consolidate all of our considerations.
Yes, ma'am, we'll, we'll send it as soon as we finish here. And then I would just like to thank our judges, not just Judge Grantis, but Judge Grantis, Judge Hamby, Judge Patterson, and Judge West. They do a phenomenal job also of even understanding the administrative aspects of the court and even weighing in that they were willing to accept asking for one staff attorney, understanding the needs of the court in some of those positions. Many would say, well, why can't you, shouldn't that take priority? They know the job that we're trying to do to bring this Cobb juvenile court up to the standard that the citizens, you know, deserve and not just expect, but deserve to really maximize safety. So they were even willing to sacrifice that second staff attorney, understanding that we can be a little creative and using interns and things of that nature to help out. So kudos to them as well, but thank you for acknowledging that, Commissioner.
Please extend that to them and let us know, let them know our appreciation. Thank you, Judge Grantis. I know you've reached out to me and you've invited me to a high school with you to see the outreach work that you're doing in the community. I heard in your presentation that you're looking to create that accountability court for the gang program, which helps us to be able to address other connected issues here in the county, which can help keep our costs low. So it's all connected. So thank you for the work that you're doing and we look forward to considering your budget requests.
Well, thank you, thank you, Chairwoman Cupid, and thank you, commissioners. Appreciate the fact that you allowed us to present our, our budget to you and we appreciate the time that you gave us. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Have a great rest of your evening.
Excellent.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. McMorris.
Thank you, Dr. McMorris.
Mr. Volkman.
You're welcome. Thank you, guys.
All right.
All right. Up next, we have our Director of Water, Judy Jones, who will be providing the next budget presentation.
Good evening, Chairwoman and Commissioners.
Good evening.
Recognizing that it has been a very long day for you, I went through my slides this afternoon and reorganized them to streamline my presentation, so my slides are not going to exactly match what I sent you yesterday, but hopefully you'll still be able to, to follow along. And I am happy to go through a more detailed presentation with any, with anyone who would like me to do so at a, at a later date. All right, so I'm going to jump right into it. The water system is a utility operation responsible for water distribution, wastewater collection and treatment and stormwater management. As a utility, the water system is funded by water and sewer revenue. We do not receive tax proceeds, so we do not fall under the general fund. Instead, we have our own operating and CIP funds and budgets. So the water system has four hundred and thirty-five full-time positions. We are organized into seven divisions, accounting, communications and education, customer service, engineering and records, which provides plan review and project management for water, sewer and wastewater treatment plants, system maintenance that provides repairs of our water and sewer infrastructure, and water protection. Underwater protection, our four wastewater treatment plants are in that division and our water quality lab. And then we have stormwater management that provides plan review, project management and environmental compliance for stormwater. So we have engineers under both the engineering and records division and under the stormwater management division. Then we also have one deputy director position that provides oversight to system maintenance, water protection and stormwater management. So our challenges and opportunities for improvement, we have increasing biosolids disposal and chemical costs. We have increasing water purchase costs. We purchase water from the Cobb Mariota Water Authority and they have a two-and-a-half percent annual rate increase scheduled for the next several years. We have aging infrastructure. We have a backlog of stormwater work orders. Currently, we have a backlog of, backlog of seven hundred and sixty-five work orders with about a hundred of those being sinkhole work orders. We have requests for additional stormwater services and we also have staffing recruitment and retention issues. So this is a graph showing our account growth and our personnel trends. So our number of accounts have grown by about twenty percent since two thousand and eight. Our number of employees has slightly decreased since two thousand and eight. Our vacancies have been increasing over the past several years and we've had a sharp increase this past year. Since October first, we have had twenty-nine additional vacancies. So we're really struggling right now. Currently, twenty-two percent of our total positions are vacant. Hardest tip right now is our system maintenance field crews and we're at thirty percent vacancies in system maintenance field crews. So the budget I'm presenting today is our operating budget. These values do not include funding for our capital improvement program, which is our water, sewer, stormwater and plant replacement and upgrade projects. I will send the board the CIP budget at a later date. So we're requesting thirty-five new positions in FY twenty-three with a two-point-eight million increase in personnel expenses. In FY twenty-three, our operating expenses are increasing ten million dollars. Nearly eight million of that increase is due to costs for sludge disposal, chemicals, electricity, water purchases and credit card fees, which we do not control. The increase in the FY twenty-four operating expense is due to increases in water purchases. Our proposed capital budgets are for new vehicles and equipment for proposed positions and for replacing old vehicles and equipment. The transfer to the general fund was eight percent of our revenue in twenty-one. This year, it was held at eighteen-point-five million. The budget I am presenting has it reduced to seven percent of our revenues in twenty-three and six percent in twenty-four, but I recognize that the board may choose to set the transfer at a different percentage. If the transfer is held at eighteen-point-five million for twenty-three and twenty-four, the subtotal increase in twenty-three would change from twelve-point-six million to fourteen million and the subtotal for twenty-four would change from a decrease of a million to an increase of almost a million. So when considering our, our budget request, our operating budget request, the board should really focus on this subtotal at the top and the increases and decreases and the changes at the top of this table. At the bottom of the table, I've broken out debt service and transfers to IS so they don't skew our, our requests. The debt service and GFA expense shown is decreasing in twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four, but that's only because we are going to pay some of the GFA loan expenses out of our CIP budget. So the actual costs are not decreasing, it's just that instead of funding them out of our operating budget, which is our five-hundred budget, we're going to pay for some of those out of our Fund Five Eighty budget, which is our system development fee revenues. Now that we have built up some money in that budget, those, those costs qualify to pay for out of that, that budget. The amounts in the transfer to IS row were included in IS's budget presentation as IS budgets these items funded by the water system. So personnel increase, our total personnel increase in twenty-three is two-point-seven million and it's held about the same in twenty-four. The slight increase is just due to increase of a part-time, I'm, I'm sorry, yeah, part-time, a part, one part-time position. So out of our thirty-five position requests, fourteen of those are in stormwater. We currently do not have any repair crews in stormwater. We would like to create one crew in twenty-three. So we are proposing a crew leader senior, an equipment operator senior, an equipment operator and a crew worker to create a stormwater maintenance crew that would allow for completion of smaller projects that are not of interest to contractors. We are asking for contract project manager senior and two contract project managers to address infrastructure failures in a timely manner and to reduce the number of outstanding work orders. We are requesting two project inspectors that are needed to respond to drainage complaints and infrastructure failures in a timely manner. We have an engineer three that is needed to reduce the number of outstanding work orders and to respond to customer inquiries in a timely manner. We have an engineer two position needed for as-built review and final plat processing and to provide design support for repair projects. We have two environmental compliance inspectors. One position would conduct proactive detention pond inspections. The other position would conduct, conduct dry weather outfall screenings and illicit discharge sampling, which is required by our stormwater permit. Currently, we are not able to conduct the required number of screenings with our current staffing levels. And finally, in stormwater, we're requesting a GIS specialist position to assist with updating floodplain mapping and to establish an electronic database for flood elevation certificates and to help create and maintain a detention pond inventory. So the total of the proposed fourteen positions is about one-point-two million. We have a slight reduction in overtime with being, with adding some of these positions and we have a reduction in part-time. We have not been using all of our seasonal part-time west-now technician hours, so we've reduced that slightly. So the total stormwater personnel adjustment is about one-point-two million. In our water protection division, we're asking to create three operator lead positions. Three of these positions would be new positions and one would be an upgrade of another position. Having these lead positions would provide operational on-the-job training and an increase focused on saving, safety. Having a lead operator every plant will help with preparing employees to transition from operator to supervisor. Currently, we only have an operator lead position at our largest plant, our Sutton plant, and that position is only on the night shift. We are also requesting an automotive tech two. There's one automotive tech and one maintenance tech in our equipment shop that basically perform the same function. So we would like to add an automated technician and reallocate the maintenance tech back to our plant and pump station crew to address staffing needs in our route maintenance group. So sometime in the past, that WRF maintenance tech position was moved from route maintenance over to the equipment shop was, was done a while back, so I don't know exactly the reason for that, but we need to get that possession, position moved back to route maintenance. We're requesting an environmental compliance inspector two position in our industrial pre-treatment section, which is needed to comply with EPA and EPD requirements for tracking and monitoring non-significant industrial users. We're requesting a separate environmental compliance inspector in our grease management section. This is needed to perform our grease trap inspections due to the number of restaurants that have increased in Cobb County with the growth of Cobb County. We are not able to keep up with inspections with our current staffing. We're requesting a process control analyst three position that is needed for network and cybersecurity at our plants and pump stations and to maintain servers, computers and other applications. So the water system handles all of our computers and cybersecurity and networking systems that control our treatment plants and our pump stations. We do that in-house. IS does not do that function for us. And then finally, in water protection, we're asking for an admin specialist one to support the backflow program. So with these new positions and one reclassification, that's six-hundred-and-twenty-one thousand and then have a slight reduction in overtime with adding the WRF operator lead position. So total water protection adjustment is about five-hundred thousand. In system maintenance, we're asking for nine utility worker four positions. Six of these would be new positions and three would be upgrades, upgraded positions. These are being requested so that every crew has a utility worker four position. Currently, some crews in system maintenance do not have a utility worker four. So our utility workers four have to move, move between crews within a day assisting one crew for part of the day and assisting another crew for another part of the day. So not having crews work shorthanded increases the risk of damage to infrastructure, the risk of injury and the, and it increases the time to complete repairs. We're also asking for four utility maintenance supervisors. So we currently have five utility maintenance supervisors who manage six to eight crews each, which is eighteen to twenty-three employees. Adding the four new supervisor positions would reduce the employee-to-supervisor ratio and allow more oversight, train and training for the crews. And it would also allow supervisors to respond to customers faster. So the ten new positions and three classifications is about seven-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand. In this one, we are slightly increasing the part-time salary for one part-time position in this division that the FY twenty-two budget for that position didn't include the FY twenty-two raise, so we need to include that in the budget for twenty-three. So the total request is a little under eight-hundred thousand. So the remaining divisions, engineering and records and customer service and engineering, we're asking for an engineer four position needed to keep up with the increasing number of infrastructure, capital improvement program projects. And due to our aging infrastructure, we just have a lot more projects that need to be done, so we need another engineer to help with those. We also are requesting an engineer two position needed for sewer rehabilitation projects. So again, as our sewer system is aging, we have more rehabilitation projects that we need to get out the door each year. And then in customer service, we're requesting a customer service specialist two, which is needed to provide better phone coverage and reduce customer call wait times. We receive regular complaints from customers about the wait times to speak to customer service. So these three new positions was almost three-hundred thousand dollars. Our operating budget, so our operating budget is increasing about ten million dollars. Again, you know, in twenty-three, in twenty-four, the increase is another two million dollars that increased from twenty-three to twenty-four is primarily water purchases. So the decrease, the increase in twenty-three, the, the top expense is sludge hauling charges, which is sludge hauling and disposal. That cost is increasing almost four million dollars. Biosolids disposal costs are just increasing due to reprocurement of those services for our two largest plants this year. The cost went up significantly and then we will be reprocuring the disposal for the two. for the two smaller plants in twenty-two and expect increases of those plants to begin in twenty-three. So we know those charges are going to go up significantly. Chemicals are increasing about two million dollars. The cost of chemicals used at our plants have increased ten to twenty-five percent per chemical, and those are chemicals that are used in our treatment process. Water purchases is increasing seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars due to the water authorities' two-and-a-half percent rate increase and projected new customers. Our credit card fees are increasing almost seven hundred and fourteen million dollars because we have more customers doing online payments through credit cards, so we have more credit card fees. Machine equipment and supplies is increasing almost six hundred and sixty thousand dollars. These increases are for replacement of pumps, parts, and other materials at our treatment plants. We don't have any major plant expansions plans, which creates more need for repairs and maintenance projects due to aging equipment at our plants. This increase is also due to parts and materials required for scheduled five-year blower service at three plants. So the blowers, which are part of the treatment process, need to be serviced at three of our plants, so that's a major part of that price. Utility is, electricity, sorry, electricity is increasing about three hundred, six hundred and thirty thousand. Electric rates increased seven, five point seven percent in January. Our building and grounds is increasing almost three hundred thousand. A big part of that is due to moving costs for mowing. Five, a hundred and fifty-six purchased flood-prone properties from our CIP budget to our operating budget. It's really mowing and maintaining those properties should really be out of the operating fund, not of our CIP funds, so we're moving that. And then another part of this increase is just due to moving some charges from tree removal and fence repairs from professional services to this account. Our maintenance and support contract is increasing over five hundred thousand dollars. The increase is due to moving costs from the USGS stream gauge operation and maintenance. Again, from our capital program to operating, this is really an ongoing operating cost, not a capital cost. And another part of this increase is due to contract price increases for plant maintenance contracts for medium voltage systems, plant data reporting system, and generator services. So we do have some significant decreases in operating. One is for bad debt expenses, so we're reducing that two hundred and ten thousand just based on actual expenses for the past several years. And then our billing services are reduced about three hundred thousand. We have a lot of customers that are transitioning from receiving a hard copy bill to receiving an electronic bill, so we are seeing a reduction in our bill printing costs. And then we have about fifty-plus other items that total one point two million. I will provide the detailed justification of those separately, rather than trying to go through all of those items today. Our capital budget. So a lot of our capital increase in twenty-three is due to new positions. In storm order, we're asking for seven pickup trucks related to new positions. The crew truck, dump truck, the mini excavator, the compact track loader, and the true trailers. Those are all equipment needed to support the crew that we're asking for so that the crew has equipment to go out and actually do the repairs. So those all total about eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars. In water protection, part of the capital cost is just construction and project improvements for placing some of our filter media at our South Cobb plant. We are asking for six vans at about three hundred and thirty thousand dollars to replace six pickup trucks, each of which are more than seventeen years old. We want to replace these with Ford Transit vans. There's a picture at the bottom of the screen or something similar. These will be used for our electricians, so they need a equipment that is really geared more for hauling their equipment that is covered rather than using a pickup truck. We have other machinery and equipment at a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars for replacing our dewatering sludge conveyor at our Northwest plant. We have two pickup trucks that are additional trucks for the new environmental compliance inspector positions. We have HVAC equipment that is needed. New explosion-proof heaters for our influent pump station to replace portable floor heaters at our noonday plant. We have renovation of buildings and structures. We, a renovation to our lab at our noonday plant to include casework and shelving. And then we have a lab instruments. We're replacing three lab instruments at our plants that are aging. Equipment's required to analyze plant samples to monitor plant performance. And we have a separate one that was broken out, a lab equipment that's over ten thousand dollars. This is to purchase an electrofisher to conduct fish sampling and streams as part of our stream monitoring program. So we have to go out and monitor streams and evaluate how well the streams are doing. And one way you do that is by counting the number of fish, but you don't want to kill the fish, so the electrofisher shocks the fish so you can collect them, you can count them, you can identify them, and then you can release them. And they live, so you're not actually killing the fish. So we need that for that program. So for water protection, the total capital request is about one point one million dollars. System maintenance. So system maintenance has a big request. They are asking for a hydro excavator that is over five hundred thousand dollars. The hydro excavator truck would be used to uncover water and sewer lines close to other utilities such as power, gas, and cable. You use the excavator, hydro excavator, rather than digging, so then, rather than using a shovel or a backhoe. Risk management supports the purchase of this equipment because it would reduce damage to other utilities and reduce the possibility of injury to an employee of hitting a power line or a cable line, our gas line. We're requesting two backhoes to replace two backhoes that are over nineteen years old and are difficult to get parts for them. We're asking to replace a sewer camera system that's used to video sewer mains eight inches to thirty-six inches in diameter. We're asking for a dump truck to replace a seventeen-year-old dump truck that has over a hundred and seventy thousand miles. We're asking for three trailers, to replace three trailers, each of which are twenty years old and can no longer safely carry new equipment. System maintenance is asking for a mini excavator. This mini excavator is slightly different than the one asked for storm order, so it's a different price. If you look at the price, you'll notice that they're different because this one's smaller. I've kind of given the description, it's a very small track excavator, and it's for making repairs in tight spaces such as between houses. So track loader attachments. We need two new track loader attachments, a power angle boom and a rock rake that are needed to perform sewer and water repairs. System maintenance is asking for an all-terrain vehicle to replace a twenty-nine-year-old farm tractor with an Argo-type vehicle to utilize to carry portable camera equipment along easements to video sewer lines along creeks and in backyards. So sewer lines that are off the road, and they have to carry this equipment in good ways. We're also asking for an aero board to replace a thirty-four-year-old aero board that cannot be repaired, and the aero boards are needed for traffic control when making repairs in the roads. So system maintenance total capital request is about one point three million dollars. So all the other divisions combined, capital requests, we're pressing computer software to upgrade our sewer model and computer software for pipe logics, which is the software used for video inspections to view the video back in the office and to analyze the videos. Other capital expenditures, we need to replace a combustible storage building. The current building has leaks and molds. And other machinery and equipment, we're requesting a new signboard at the customer service campus. We'd like to, our sign we have now is looking pretty rough, and we would like to replace it with an electronic board that we could use to promote community events, job openings, and water restrictions. Our office is located at the corner of Atlanta Road and South Cobb Drive, so it's a very busy intersection and would be a great way to utilize that sign to communicate with the public. We're asking for a pickup truck to replace. We want to replace a four-door pickup truck, which is over seventeen years old, with a two-door pickup truck in our meter services tech group. And then we need to replace a pole camera that is used to inspect manholes. So you lower the camera down in the manhole. Seventeen thousand dollars, I know it sounds a lot for a camera, but it's not your typical camera. So the total capital request for the other divisions is about a hundred and eighty-six, eighty-six thousand dollars. So back to our summary page. The one thing that I didn't mention that I meant to mention is the budget that I'm presenting with the storm water positions, those positions are being requested to adequately provide the services that we're providing today. So to get us, we're not backlogged in work orders, so we're able to keep up with work orders, we're able to respond to customers, we're able to inspect detention ponds, we're able to do plan review and zoning, looking at zoning cases efficiently. It is not to increase services or expand services, so if the board wanted to at a later date expand the services that we're providing for storm order, we would need to reevaluate our budget to cover that, those additional services. So with that, I'll conclude my presentation and take any questions.
Thank you, Director, for that thorough presentation. And to imagine that you pared down the one that you had to provide, what you provided us today is something else, but I certainly have learned a lot in listening to you walk through all of these requests regarding the various revisions within your department. Again, I'm going to walk through each of our commissioners, and I'll start off differently. I'll start with Commission District Two this time and ask if any of you have any questions, and then just walk through each of the commissioners. Commissioner Richardson, do you have any comments or questions?
No comments. No, thank you. No comments or questions. Just appreciate Judy for all the work and certainly to continue the conversations as well. I certainly appreciate the focus on storm water management as well.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Burrell?
Yes, thank you, Judy. Woo, that was a lot, even condensed. The equipment that you're replacing, what happens to the old equipment?
We'll surplus it and see if anybody wants to buy it.
Okay. I didn't know if it was sent to other departments, but I mean, I guess if it's got that many miles on it or needs, you know, a lot of repairs, there's really no useful life left. Okay, that's all I had. And I still owe you a phone call, but it won't be today.
Thank you.
Commissioner, yes, Commissioner Sheffield?
Yes, yeah, I had just have one question, but Judy, I appreciate the presentation. It was very in-depth, and it touched on a lot of different areas that I believe will help solve some of our storm water issues. But my question is regarding the equipment, the increase in equipment. Are we looking at the potential of purchasing property down the road to store the equipment?
We have enough property here at the water system to store the equipment, between here and our plants, that we're okay with the property.
Okay, thank you. That was my only question.
Thank you, Commissioner Gamble?
No, thank you, Judy.
Thank you. I'm fortunate I serve on our P.O.A.T. Marietta Water Authority and get a chance to see how we get the water to convey to distributors. And it gave me a very different sense of appreciation of all the work that goes into the water that comes out of our taps. I know you're also responsible for addressing our storm water and wastewater issues here in the county. And I must say that, you know, our department has done an exceptional job, particularly in light of the resources and in light of the fluctuations that you've had with staffing and the various needs that have come up over time. Again, I appreciate you walking us in-depth through the various needs of the agency, I'm sure with every department, but I can certainly say here that, you know, every request that you listed here can go towards helping to better our ability to serve our customers. And so just thank you for walking us through this. I could ask you a lot of questions. I'm going to save it just in consideration of time here today. But I want to thank you for taking time to send the commissioners your presentation, and we have that on hand in case we want to follow up with you directly. With that, thank you for doing a fantastic job for us. It's a little saddening to know that your requests here today are just to keep things as is. You said if we would expand with Stormwater Utility, there would be more, which lets us again know there's just the expansive work that you do. But if we're very serious about this, we've got to get serious about funding the work that we do. Thank you, Judy. Appreciate you.
Thank you.
With that, I'm going to turn things over to our Clerk of Superior Court, who is last but certainly not least. Thank you for hanging with us today, for your patience with us today so that we can hear from you and your budget request for the upcoming fiscal year. Commissioner?
And I'm sorry, can you hear me?
Can you hear me? Hold on.
Now I can, but now there's echoes.
Can you hear us now?
Wonderful, perfect.
Can you hear me now? Okay, all right. Chairwoman Q. B., Commissioners Burrell, State Bill, Richardson, and Gamble, thank you guys for all that you've done to ensure that we here at the Clerk of the Superior Court office runs smoothly and everything. And I actually want to thank my staff and also the Finance Department for everything they've done so far to contribute to this. It has been a long day for everyone, and so we're going to move through this real quickly. I did send out slides earlier this morning. You may not, because you've been in session all day, had an opportunity to look at it, but I wanted to make sure you did have it. And if you have any questions, you want to email me, please do that. But we will move through this quickly for you. As you know, this is the Clerk of the Superior Court office, and we are constitutional office. And so I'm not going to go much into this, but we have three divisions that we do, which is our judicial, which is responsible for the management and the preservation of the records. We have the real estate side. We also have the administrative technology side as well. And so our mission here at the Clerk of the Superior Court is to provide progressive and efficient court-related record management and financial service to the judicial system, to the public, and to have access to everyone. And I say it quickly, and I mean quickly for you. And I'm not going to read all of this because it's time to do it. Our strategy priorities is customer service. Sorry, customer service, employee satisfaction, and financial management. We also have our organization structure chart here for you. It talks about all the departments we have here. This is the Clerk, our Chief Deputy Clerk, Accounting, Information, Civil and Criminal Cases, Courtroom Division, Real Estate Division, Board of Equalization, and our Passport Agency. Challenges. Everyone's having the same challenges, and we are no exception to that. Employee retention, very hard to keep employees here. We are having an issue right now. And as you see from our budget, as we come in for personnel, with the lack of retaining employees for our office. It's very critical that we evaluate, reclassify, adjust our current employee salaries. If, we got an issue. Sorry, this is part of one of our challenges. And that we can actually increase and get competitive salaries for attracting qualified personnel. Also, as you can see, our systems here are over twenty years old. And I want to thank you for the last approval you did to help us at least get started with the land management management, which is the real estate software and the Board of Equalization software. But we still know that the case management software is being But we still know that the case management software is being handled by IAS. And it's critical, the system we are currently using right now is over twenty years old. And that system can crash any moment, any one of our systems can. We have a whole outdated financial management system. My accounting department is using Excel, which is not good. It is very unacceptable for us to take in money and to reconcile with. That leaves us at a possibility of security risk. It leaves us with a lot of errors we have to do. And it leaves us to a point where we raise misclassified funding, that's coming in and going out. I mean, no one should be manually updating anything at this day and age with a Excel. And that's what we have right now. So we need funding so that we can update that financial management system. We are also responsible for preserving documents. And so we have to figure out a way that we can digitize a lot of these documents we have. We cannot get records and remove records. We have records here from the exception of Cobb County that we have to preserve. We have to keep those records here at the courthouse. We have to, some of them, archive them. We have to make them available to the public if they're asked for. So we need to be able to have a high-quality system of records management as well. We're gonna talk, I'm gonna talk a little bit right now about the funds we have generated, um, as far as everything. As you know, we here at the Court is a judicial officer where we collect the fine fees and we distribute these money out. We reimburse, we have restitution money, we have a public register. All this money flows through us. We're really a pass-through agency. And as being a pass-through agency, we collect bond money, restitution. We have intangible taxes, transfer taxes. And so as you can see here, I did a slide that provided to you the how much we have generated from fiscal year nineteen, twenty, and I actually, this twenty-one is actual. We here are on a calendar because my term, my system goes as it relates to the term of the course. I go from January to December, although the county is on a, another fiscal year, I have to calculate things according to January to December because it ends with the term of the officer. As you can see, in December, at the end of December twenty-twenty-one, and these are actual numbers, we have generated sixty-two million dollars total. And this is all the fees that have come in. I'm gonna go to another slide and give you a little bit of a breakdown and you can, of how much we've actually generated that has come over to Cobb County. So as you can see here, from this slide, the money that we have given over to the county and fees in twenty-twenty-one is twenty-eight million dollars is what we have actually provided over so far. And I've broken it down in several ways. I've broken it down in intangible taxes, and you can see the difference from two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-one. And transfer taxes, and then the general revenue, which consists of the real estate fees, the civil case fees and the criminal case fees that we have provided over and submitted to the county. Of these fees that we've done, and I've broken it out on the side, it also, I told you that we had sixty-two million. Well, more than fifty million of those intangible taxes which we've been collecting for fifty-twenty-one, of which thirty-one million went to other municipalities. Actworth, Ossale, Tennesaw, Marietta, Powder Springs, Mylins and the Scream General Fund. We collect all of these fees over at this office. Any questions, anyone so far, or you want to wait till the end? Hello? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, okay, I'm sorry, all right.
Now, you are, you are going, I mean, your sound system isn't the best sound system. It's a little bit muffled, I'll share with you, but we can hear you.
Okay, and that's the system I'm talking about, Commissioner.
You are making the case.
Yeah, I'm making my case.
Yes.
This is the problem we have with the old system that we have. I'm gonna talk about our performance measures here. And so, and I, like I said, I know you're busy in your time and everyone's tired, so I'm gonna run through this. The cases for the criminal and civil cases that we've handled so far as of twenty-twenty-one, the number of filings has been ten million. The mu- number of resolutions has been ten million. The number of pending cases we have is nine point five thousand, ten thousand, I'm sorry. These means are in my head, ten thousand, seven hundred and fifty, ten thousand, two fifty and nine thousand five hundred. Real estate, come back to the real estate, I'm sorry, come back with slides. Real estate, in our real estate, we have filed this year a hundred and seventy-two Ds. We have leads of twenty-four thousand. We have UCC, which are personal property leads, of five thousand. And we are also a notary. And so we have had at least eight thousand people come in to ask for a notary commission here with us. Also, this is my budget that I'm asking for as we talk about it. What I'm asking for for fiscal year twenty-three is, and that's before, one point nine in personnel, eight hundred and fourteen in operating, and forty in capital, which is a total of two point eight million. And that's the increase from the last year, it's a two hundred and eight million. And then of fiscal year twenty-four, you can see that, but we'll concentrate right now on fiscal year twenty-twenty-three. I'm not gonna go through all of these, um, one by one of reading them to you. Go back to the personnel, please. I mean, I, which one do I have first? Personnel. I'm not gonna go through all of these, but what I am gonna say is that these are the positions that we need. From the numbers that you saw, that we have, of the cases we have coming in, of the Ds that we have filed, we are mandated to have things in real estate recorded within forty-eight hours. We've had a backlog. And part of that backlog is because we don't have the staff to do it. So I am gonna be coming to you soon, asking you for some personnel issues and to revise my fiscal year twenty-two budget. And with doing that, that's gonna take away some of this money that I'm asking you for in twenty-twenty-three because it's an urgent need. I also have stepped in to help my real estate department because I've gotten notice of not being in compliance because we haven't been able to report or index properly in a timely manner. So one, we don't have the staff, but two, our system is bad. And so we have to take our time to do this with the system that we have or we make errors. And if we make an error, it trickles down to everyone. So I'm not gonna go through all of these, but I am asking you for positions in, um, as it relates to staff. But if you want me to go through each one, I will. Um, I'm asking you for my operating costs. And as you can see from this slide, my largest operating cost is my cost for the new system that we're asking for, which is three hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. Everything else I'm asking for is to help us operate in a more efficiency manner as it relates to everything. Because this is just, I'm not gonna go through all of these. I'm trying to be, I think of everyone's time. So that's my eight hundred. Um, this is the justification for my capital, which means we have a server here, we need to update. We have security cameras in here that we found out that they are not, um, holding our tape for a long amount of time. We had one of the sheriffs come in and needed a tape from the real estate department for a case that they have. The system didn't have it. I needed to hold it for longer than what it had. I don't need it to erase the system. Because it's very vital that we have this for a case that the sheriff may need, in case they have to, or the DA may need to, um, indict someone. They were able to indict a person without it, but it's just embarrassing when I have to tell them, oh, we went back, but that tape is gone because of our system. Um, the other department that's under my purview, which came under my purview in two thousand and eleven, is the Board of Equalization. So as you know, the Board of Equalization is the board that hears the hearing from taxpayers as their tax appeals. Um, we have five boards. Each board consists of three members and an alternate. So every time we run a board, we have to make sure that there are three members there and that there's an alternate person there. The statute requires us to pay a stipend as well. It also requires that they have forty hours of training. It requires that they have every year another eight hours of training. We have to pay for that training. We have to give them a daily allowance when they go to their training. And we have to, if they, they don't like what the BOE members say, they have to go to a hearing officer, they can rescue, go to a hearing officer. We have to by law pay for that. Hearing officers are individuals that are on the list of the Board of Appraisers from the state. And we have to actually pay those individuals to come in and hear those as well. If you have a property value or a value of five hundred thousand or more, is when you can go to the hearing officer. Here's the numbers that we have so far from, um, this. We've done three thousand residential hea- appeal, hearing appeals, commercial a thousand, and this is this year, twenty-twenty-one, the last year. Commercial hearings, five hundred and sixty-four. Personal property hearings, two fifteen, we do those as well. We've had to reschedule six, four hundred and four, and we've had, um, homestead of fifty-nine. I actually did twenty-one. We proposed what's gonna happen in twenty-two and what's gonna happen in twenty-three. You can go to the next slide. General fund for the Board of Equalization that I'm asking for. Right now, my board members, I'm only allocated seventy-two thousand. I just told you I have five boards and I have to have four persons per board. We are not paying them what they should be paid. Actually, I'm not paying them out of my Board of Equalization fund. I've had to pay from my fund from the clerk's side because the law mandates that I do provide those stipends to them and that training. I'm asking for three hundred and ninety-five thousand so that I can move forward with that. I would like to come to you for revision of that seventy-two thousand so that I can pay for those board members as well. Any citizen that can be on a grand jury is able to be on the Board of Equalization here. And so I'm asking for an increase so that we can have the money to pay for that. And because I have five boards, I don't have the staff, although we're running those boards. The people over there are really there to make it sure we stay accordingly to what we have to do for these hearings. So we're running the board, we're running them without the proper staff we need. And so I need to get staff over there so that we can actually get all those hearings going in the way we should go. And I'm not overworking those individuals who are over there for this hearing. Uh, these are the positions that I'm asking for over there. I'm asking for two administrative specialists and I'm asking for administrative coordinator as well for that. Um, this is my operating board, the operating detail expense, which is what I asked for. I'm asking for the Board Equalization fee of three hundred and fifty thousand, their travel of fifteen, registration fees of ten, and their general office supplies, because I've been taking care of their office supplies as well over here, of seven hundred and five dollars, seven thousand five hundred dollars. Um, we don't need to go through that, we can go through that. And that's it. Any questions?
Thank you, um, Clerk Taylor, for walking us through the needs of your operation and, um, giving us a peek that we probably have not really had into understanding, um, the entirety that, um, of all the work that you do. Particularly, I didn't know the relationship that you have with all of our cities here in addition to just managing the interest of the counties. And, you know, I'm familiar, I'm familiar with the BOE, but again, just hearing about your obligation to them and all of those that serve on it, I appreciate. You've, at least for the amount of time that I've served on this board, giving us, um, some education around that. With that, I'm gonna turn things over to our commissioners, and I've been going in order of district. And I hate that my district board commissioner always ends up being last but not least. Uh, but I'm gonna start with Commissioner Burrow. Uh, and see if you have any questions or comments for, um, Ms. Taylor.
Hi, Clerk. Um, just, I, I know we've had the Board of Equalization in place and, um, maybe the appeals have increased or the, have we increased the boards, the five boards? Or there's, there, and how are they compen- I mean, who decides their compensation? Uh, in a state board that does that or?
No, we, we decide their compensation here. Um, I actually kind of, what I've done is, the only thing that the state actually has authority over as it relates to is what they get when they do online training. And if they do an online training for the eight hours of that online training, they start to get twenty-five dollars. Um, the last administration before me was actually allocating a hundred and twenty-five dollars, which had been approved through the board, for, um, each board member for the hearings. Uh, I didn't have the money to do that. So I actually went down because all the other counties were pretty much giving them a hundred dollars. So I actually went down because I was taking it out of my court's budget because they had already overcharged into the BOE's budget. There was no money there, period. Um, not even for their supplies. And so I was taking some mine. So I definitely would love to be able to get them back. You know, they're hard workers. They are coming in, spending their time actually hearing these appeals, which could sometimes take all day. Um, and we have five boards, these are the boards that were there prior to me. We, um, pretty much, you know, we need, we can, we can really stand six boards with all the hearings, you know, that we're having. And I expect, um, that this year, because of the property values going up and they just received their tax bills and they have until April the first to actually appeal it, that we're gonna end up having a lot of appeals coming on as relates to that. And we have a lot of the commercial, uh, organizations that really are appealing there. Because remember, they not only do the value, but they have to also do the personal property that they have within their stores, like Home Depot, Lowe's and things of those natures. They have to also get a value on all of that equipment they have. They have to also get a value on all of that equipment they have.
Okay, but, um, why, why didn't you have it in your budget if it's been the same every year? Why, why couldn't?
But when I came in, when I came into office, the budget was already approved. The 72,000 dollars that I just showed you was the budget for the operating space, which included. Now, why it wasn't there, I don't know. I can tell you what they said, but I don't know they. As relates to tell you what was said, that every time it was brought to the board, it was not approved. Um, and why, I have no idea. Why it wasn't approved to provide the money, because they have to be compensated or, and that's mandated according to the state.
Okay.
And so, I'm asking.
Was it changed before you took office, to go from 125 to 100? Well, never mind. Yeah, I'm just confused as to why, when you took office, if they had been paid the 125 every year, that should have been set in the budget, unless it was reduced by the previous.
I have no, I have no idea was, I have no idea why it was not set in the budget. I have no idea why my budget, when I started, added in the budget, why those line items were negative. I have no idea why it was overspent. I can only go forward with what I have at hand with me. And to make sure that we stay in compliance, of making sure that they are compensated.
So, are you requesting that it go back up to 125 per hearing?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Commissioner Burrow, and thank you, um, Clerk Taylor, for clarifying that for us. Commissioner Sheffield, do you have any comments or questions?
My only comment is, Connie, I, I appreciate you being sensitive to our time tonight, but in each of our presentations, we heard and asked for, uh, personnel increases. And while you kind of glossed over that and spent a little time on the BOE, uh, request, I, I would just ask if you would share with us your top three priorities, uh, I'm sorry, your top three positions of critical need. And we don't need a lot of details, just that I would like for you to at least address some of those shortfalls in your department and your area.
Yes, yes, ma'am. I would love to do that. And thank you for that. My priority needs are my, uh, judicial tech, because they work in the courtroom. I have front counters that work with intaking of the filing of the Ds. I have my calendar court. To be honest with you, yeah, the judicial tech, my judicial tech three, my judicial tech four. Um, I'm asking for some new positions because of the judicial tech specialist, because I'm asking that they actually, um, be assigned to the judges. As you know, we have, what, 11 judges now? 11 judges? We are expected to get a new judge next year. They spend a lot of time doing a lot of work for the judges in handling those cases. Um, they work overtime, because as long as the judge is on the bench, they have to work. Also, um, another one I'm asking for is my accounting department. I have three people in my accounting department. And if you can see from my budget, we collect a lot of revenue. We have no internal control over here. I have to separate the duties. So, my accounting coordinators, my accounting two positions are another position that I find that are real critical for me. I need to have individuals that do accounts payable, accounts receivable, reconciliation of a bank account. We have a lot of bank accounts over here that we have to have. We have, we intake bond money. I have to be able to have people that are on that front counter intaking that bond money. If we have someone coming in and bringing in a 10,000 dollar cash bond money, we have to make sure we account for that, and we have to have control over all of that money.
Was that it?
That was it, yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. That was it. And of course, Connie, you'll, um, I, I think you've already sent the presentation?
Yes, ma'am.
Did you say? Okay. Thank you. That, that, that's all I had, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yes, and I believe there was a request for you to put up the slide of your personnel, um, for classes?
And if I seem passionate, it's because there's a lot of work, and we have a lot of people over here that are working really hard, um, to ensure that this court system, we're the business owners of the court. And so, we are working, they're working really hard to make sure that we, first of all, make sure the citizens are able to obtain what they need. Secondly, make sure the court, you know, we not only support the citizens, but we support the sheriff's office, we support the judge, we support the DA's office. And so, all of that comes to us. And so, we have to make sure that if there are cases, I mean, if there's something that has to be filed right away, we have to do it. You know, we have people that come into the lobby, and they're, and I invite everyone to please come over, because I didn't put it in here, but we do need to, we, we, we don't have any space. We, we don't have any space, not even for when the people come into the doors. They come in, and they're looking around, trying to see, where do I go? You know, I need a copy of this file. I need to get my bond money back, that I put up for someone. I need to pay my restitution here. I mean, we're just, we're lost, and they're lost. And so, they're waiting to be served. We, 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 we need the staff, so that we can make sure that, and make sure that everything is filed properly. I mean, all it takes is one time for us to file someone's case wrong, because we don't have it, or delay that case when someone's in jail. We have protective orders that we handle over here. And if we get a protective order, we have people in court every day getting a protective order. Our staff have to wait. They may bring those protective orders down about 4:30, quarter to 5:00. We have to get them into the system before we go home. Because if we don't, that could be someone's life.
Thank you. You appreciate.
So, if I seem a little passionate, uh, understand.
We appreciate you doing that, and wanting to make sure that you are responding to the needs of all those that you are required to serve.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah.
So, do you want me to go through all of the, uh, personnel that we're asking for here?
No, ma'am. It was just asked by a commissioner, I believe as Commissioner Sheffield was talking, or was asking questions to see what you have. But even just looking at what you're asking for accounting, I mean, this is, this is a sizable volume. It's a significant request. With that, we have two more questions I want to check in with. Commissioner Gamble, do you have any questions or comments for our clerk?
I have a lot, but I will defer to sending them an email.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it. And also, um, for, um, last but not least, Commissioner, um, Richardson, do you have any questions or comments for our clerk?
Thank you. Just, just one, and I'm not sure if I'm tired, or just, I don't, I don't know, it's probably some combination thereof. Uh, but I saw requested and proposed, and the numbers were very different, and that was, that structure was just different from the other presentations.
All right, let's go, you want to go back to the budget?
If, if there is a short, if there's a, if there's a short answer to help me just understand, um, go for it. If it's a longer explanation, I will follow up afterwards.
It's probably short, so why don't, why don't we pull that, uh, budget, um, slide back up, and see if that helps? I don't have a problem with that. And I think probably the way that you did is because what I actually did on my budget presentation here for you, is I wanted you to see exactly what I was requesting.
Okay, got it. Just the difference.
And then, what it actually proposed. And the difference is, yes, ma'am. I, I wanted to, you see, like, when I did my detail, what amount that I'm actually requesting under that fiscal year, and then, it adds up to that proposed amount.
We're, we're good, we're good. It's the difference.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Richardson, for that, um, point of clarification for all of us. Clerk Taylor, thank you so much for being with us here today. Our Superior Court Clerk Taylor, thank you for being here with us. I see your team with you. Thank you, all of you, for being here with us, and again, helping to educate us, but also inform us about the need that, um, you have within, um, your office, so that we can be keeping up with all the requirements that are associated with your service, uh, not only the courts, but our DA's offices, you shared, your responses to the sheriff, your work with the different cities, and just the general public that's coming in with their requests. There's certainly a volume of matters that you're responsible for, and you help to keep things going. So, we thank you for that. I understand that you sent everyone your.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, go on.
Yes, I understand that you sent commissioners your presentation, so we'll have opportunity to get that and ask questions. I hate that we can't have a robust time here with you today, in light of the full day that we all have had. And I know, probably our bandwidth is probably pretty, pretty tight here at this point. But, um, if there's any, yes, closing comments or remarks you wanted to make, please let us know.
I just want to invite each one of you over, um, just so you could get a feel for, you know, what we do over here in our different departments. You know, we have the court side over here, across the street over there, we have the real estate side, over where the tax assistance office, that's where our BOE is. So, I'd love for you to come over here, just so you can see, and see the volume of work that we are doing, and see the people that are coming in, and the citizens that are coming in, and what they're asking for. And I can just show you even where our file rooms are, how we have all these files that we cannot get rid of, how they're stacked from bottom to the top, all the way out. And so, I definitely would love for you to just, five minutes, come over and say hello. And thank you for your time.
You're welcome, and thank you for extending that invitation to us. I know you, uh, we've had that also shared with us for others that are over in the judicial campus. And so, um, thank you for underscoring that opportunity for us. Thank you again, all of you, for your time here today. For the commissioners, thank you for sticking it out today, and for your avid participation in all the matters that were before us. For any staff that's still here, thank you for supporting us today. Thank you for keeping this county going. To our staff here with Cobb County TV and IS, thank you for being with us this entire time, both yesterday and today, in, um, helping us be present here for the public, so that we can conduct these meetings virtually. I pray that everybody has a good evening, a healthy and safe evening, and I look forward to the next time that we meet again. To our public, oh, they're the last ones. Thank you for sticking it out and being a part of this. This is who, this, you're the reason why we do all of this. So, if you have any questions or concerns, you could feel free to reach out to our Superior Court Clerk, or to any of our commissioners, so that we can help respond. With all of that, thank you, commissioners. Hope you have a great evening.